Am I there? Ah, there we go. Welcome, everybody, to our meeting tonight. It is a good night and we have not too long a meeting, it looks like. So, we're going to call our meeting to order and we'll have a roll call by our City Clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The records shall reflect that all members are present.
If you'll rise, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Aguilar, and after that, our invocation will be by Reverend Frank Hallock by the United Methodist Church of Vista. Welcome.
Please join me in honoring our nation's flag. Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I invite us to a moment of contemplation in whatever way seems best for you. Gracious God, we gather as a community together, aware of the fact that we are called to leadership in this place and in this time, and how grateful we are to be in this place, in this time, to be in the community of Vista, as a part of this state of California, in this wonderful country of the United States. We put into practice here those issues of government and governance that we have agreed to live by together, and it is with gratitude that we recognize those who have stepped forward, who have been called forward to lead us in that. We also give you thanks for the awareness that while we may not agree on every single item, we do find consensus and a way to move forward. That, I think, is part of how you model to be in community, and we give you thanks for that. And as a community, we pause for just a moment to think of another community across the water, as they say, and the tragic deaths occurred by a terrorist attack in Manchester, England. We are aware that you are in the midst of all things, and for that, we give you thanks. So bless this gathering, bless us each, bless this community, and we ask it all in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. And according to the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. So the next thing, we'll have the approval of our agenda by our City Manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are two items to remove from the agenda this evening. The first is Discussion Item D1, Vista General Plan 2030, and then the second item is Discussion Item Number Two, which is entitled "Business License Fees." Both of those will be removed, so tonight you have your presentations and consent calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, so we have, tonight we have two presentations. The first one is a recognition of Adopt-a-Block volunteers, and the second one is our certificate as of appreciation for youth commissioners. So I'd just like to invite all my council members, fellow council members, to join me at the podium down there for the presentations. Okay, I'll take this. Here's, no, we're doing this one first. These are the commissioners. So here they are. Okay, now I'm organized. Okay, so we're going to do the commissioners first, and I'm going to do first the Youth Advisory Commission, and then when I call your name, if you'll come forward and accept your certificate, and remain here for photos. So I'll do the whole Youth Commission, all of you together in one photo, so we can do it that way. So we'll start out with Kelly Canatero. Is Kelly here? Congratulations. So if you just stay here, and then we'll do pictures all together. Is that okay? Okay, yeah. Thanks, Dominic. No Rio yet? Okay, hold hers. And Tammy Trung. Those are our Planning Commissioners, and they have, and what does it say? Let me read one of your little things here. Yes, it's for, it's, it says, "In recognition of exceptional service to the community since October 2016 while serving on the Youth Commission in the City of Vista, California." So it's presented this day, the 25th of May, 2017, to all, to each of these. Whoop, there you are. So your picture probably is better out here. You want it out here, up, up in front here? And then we'll kind of get behind you guys. How's that? Is that good?
Sounds fantastic.
Okay. We so appreciate their service to the community for the Youth Commission. They do a great job this last year, so. And next, we're going to do our Planning Commissioner, Jonah Cranford. And he's the only one from the Planning Commissioner, so we'll have to do individual picture. So, so we, we'll go out there and do picture. Yeah, picture. Okay, and then the last one, serving in our Public Arts, Joanna Medina and Mason George. That's from the Public Arts Commission. Thanks, Joanna. And is Mason George here? No, no? Did he come? Okay, then you get your picture taken with all of us, all by yourself. Our last but certainly not least, we have Judith Ann Hudson. Where is she? Is she here? Yeah, there's her. Yay! So we want to give special recognition to Ann, who was appointed to serve on our Community Safety Commission for each of the last four years, and prior to that, she served one year on the Public Arts Commission. So congratulations to Ann. Are you a senior this year?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're graduating? And where are you going?
I'm actually going to head to Korea.
Oh, you are?
I'm going to see family at Tech U.
Oh, how wonderful. She's going to Korea to see her family over there, so that's good. So this is the Adopt-a-Block program. You guys here, most of you here? So through the city's Adopt-a-Block program, groups or individuals adopt an area of the city to help keep it clean. The city provides the supplies while the groups provide the volunteer manpower. And tonight, we want to recognize the Vista Clean Environment Group. This group of 38 volunteers provided a total of 767 volunteer hours through bi-monthly cleanup activities. So please come to the front of the room when I call your name, and then you can remain up here, and we'll take a group picture. It's a big, it's actually a big group, so you want to go here on the name. Thanks, Maria. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Hard to shake that chair. And Christopher D. Valesco. Are you all family?
Yes.
Okay. Sylvia here? No, okay. Maria G. Solomon? Is it Solomon?
Yeah, it's Eva.
She's not here either. Is David here? David Solomon here?
Yeah.
They're not here. Alexandra? Any of the Salomans? Oh, Alexandra is, okay. Congratulations. Thanks, you guys, for doing what you do. We appreciate you guys.
He's the dad for you guys. You're the dad. Congratulations. Good families, nice.
Okay, then moving on, we're going to go to Yasmin Morales Lopez. Is she here? No, is Clementina Lopez here? Richard Morales Lopez?
Yeah.
No, the Lopez family didn't make it tonight. Alma Garito Flores?
No, he's not here.
No. Michelle Angelino Garito? Garito? Ernesto Nieto? Maria Resen, this is a test of my Spanish. Was it? Resendas? Maria Resendas?
Yeah.
Not here. Delphina Delgado? Yay! I want to thank your families for doing that. of the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed You guys, you are great, and you take, you know, your pride in the community. We appreciate all of that that you do. from the calendar, and any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a I want to do some walks this summer, and maybe I can come and help you guys. request-to-speak card to the Clerk's secretary. Tell me when you're going to do it, and I'll come and walk with you guys and do some trash Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption and pick up. If you let me know, I'd be happy to do that with you, okay? of the calendar. Okay, so for that, we're going to do pictures. And so we have C1 through C8 on our consent calendar. I think probably up in front again, so little ones, short people in the front. Does anybody want anything removed up here, or if not, I entertain a motion. Councilmember Aguilar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not looking to remove anything, just looking to make a motion to accept the consent calendar as submitted.
Okay. Let's have a motion and a second. That motion passes unanimously, and that brings us to our oral communications, and I have two. Here I have, oh, I actually have three. So we're going to do John Byram. We'll start, is John, where'd John go? Do you want all of us down here? Just me?
After I finish.
Okay.
Madam Mayor and council members, my name is John Byram. I'm from North Coastal Prevention Coalition, and on April 20th of this year, we had our 14th, 420 Remix, a celebration of sober and drug-free life choices day, and invited every middle schooler from Carlsbad, Oceanside, and Vista. We had over 717 middle schoolers at Boomer's that day, and one of the things we did is we had a law enforcement go-kart race, and we had Vista Sheriff's, we had Oceanside PD, Carlsbad PD, Highway Patrol, and the ABC came out in Race Two. One of the, we, we wanted, we have this trophy, and we wanted to present it to the winner, which is Deputy Frank Stalzer. He is the only name on this trophy. He always wins the race, and so we wanted to present it to him.
Is he here?
If he would come down here.
Yeah. Okay.
He had that then, too.
You should see, I was driving like this.
He beat them by a long ways.
Okay, we're going to go up here. Take a picture of that, of our hero. Go-kart racing there.
You want my trophy?
Yeah. Everybody in?
Yeah.
Okay. Congratulations. Congratulations to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Congratulations as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Hopefully, next year, we're going to try to add a Chiefs race.
I would just like to take a moment to thank Captain Cinemo for all the driver training he sent me, too. It paid off in preparation for this highly anticipated race.
Okay, our next speaker is Daniel Carlin.
First of all, I'd like to really thank Armand Rigby and John Aguilar because they responded. I'll tell you what, you have a, I didn't have your card. I used to have it, but man, when you have a city councilman talking to people like the police or, you know, the code enforcement, things happen. I mean, it's awesome. I just wanted to thank you for that. My name is Dan Carlin. I've lived here, 516 Blackbird, for 39 years. I lived at 1758 York Drive for the first 18 years, and seven years I rented various places. And I bought my house in '78 under Prop 13. I can't live anyplace, anywhere cheaper than here. This is a wonderful place. This is, this is a place, I have everything, you know, and I'm ready to leave. I'm ready, they, they're ready to chase me out of town, and it's really unfortunate. And if I leave, my neighborhood goes down. I mean, because I'm the person that's there fighting the jerks. And we can't lose these working-class neighborhoods, you know? I'm in the low end. I'm in the $400,000, $450,000 low-end neighborhood, and, and we really have to start, I don't know if we have to educate or what, what we have to do. I mean, I'm the guy that goes, picks up the shopping carts, you know, that are left on the street, my wife's picking up trash, and, you know, I have a neighbor down on the corner that he thinks it's his God-given right to drink and play loud music till 6:00 in the morning, and we, you know, we played it, you know, we, we kind of play the game. We have three or four neighbors. We'll fall, all phone in at the same time, and last Sunday, that's why I phoned you guys because it wasn't happening. And I know the police department was very busy that night because it's hard to get through. But part of this problem was mine because I ignored this problem. I ignored the people building crapola all over, you know, the, the things, building without permit, building stuff that was not up to codes, until they came right next door to me, build a tin roof right up to my property line. They have businesses going, I don't know what the business is. She's an entrepreneur, man, but it's not, it's not licensed through the city. It has no health department, has nothing. And we got to start fighting this stuff.
Sir, I need you to kind of wrap up, if you could.
Okay. If we, what we have to do is we have to start going to the Chapter Two, General City Plan 2030, Land Use and Community Identity, LUCI, Goal Three, preserve, protect existing residential neighborhoods from actions, activities, and uses that may have adverse impacts upon the enjoyment of residential living. Now, when people don't care about the law, then we have to stop it. We have to have the police, we have to have code enforcement, and we have to have the Building Department in there helping us. And I have all three right now. They are helping me.
Okay, thank you.
What I'd like to tell people is, we all, all of Vista, all the citizens of Vista have to do this, or we will lose this town where no one will feel safe. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I went over.
No, it's okay. You're okay. You're okay. Okay, Mark Carpenter. I actually just sent you an email today.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, my computer has been a little overworked this weekend, actually for the last week. First and foremost, I'd like to send a sincere thank you to the following people, Inspector Terry Miller, Sergeant Twymann, Councilman Aguilar, and Ms. Calte Valdez. I'm thanking you for your immediate response to a problem that is an increased problem in the Townsite Vista community, and for communities that are east and northeast of the '78 freeway, and I'm talking about the illegal cannabis businesses that are establishing themselves and embedding themselves within our neighborhoods. Just a little bit about myself, I'm a retired employee of Mental Health Systems Incorporated, was an employee there for 10 years. My last position there, I was charged with developing and the inception of two programs here in San Diego, which are still running, the North Star Act Program and the Center Star Act Program, which I'm very proud of. They were programs designed specifically for the chronically homeless and severely mentally ill. A passion I have because I lost my sister to homelessness, addiction, and mental illness in 2005. She was murdered, she was strangled in Medestza, California. Other positions I held as an AOD counselor, a systems administrator, and also an educator in AOD for CAR. And that's just to establish a little bit of credibility as to my observation of social behavior in our neighborhood. The purpose of me addressing the council is to ask for support within the Townsite community and to voice some, some concerns of our local neighbors and businesspeople, the constituents that have voted you in and support you. They are very frustrated in what to do about this situation. Within a two-mile radius, there have been, there have been three dispensaries that have sprung up. If you see the map there, specifically in the little Townsite area, from Lincoln Elementary School to the little restaurant on Newport Drive, the Yellow Restaurant, if you're familiar with the area on East Vista Way, which is about a two-mile period, there's three dispensaries. One of them is located directly across the street from my house, and it is posed as an ice cream store. The owners there, originally when they came there, I tried to go and approach them with an open mind as a citizen. I realized what we just voted, and let me just say this, I stand before you with a little buyer's remorse, and I stand here with conflict. Even though I have a background in AOD, I have voted for every amendment and supportive act in order to make medical cannabis available to patients in a responsible manner. But what we're seeing is not a responsible manner. We're seeing a wild cowboy, Western atmosphere where people are being allowed to run their businesses unsupervised, unregulated, and they are being positioned in communities that were targeted in the first place to make medical, to make marijuana a class act, a class, scheduled class drug in the first place by DuPont, Hearst, William Hearst, and some other people. And there's other conspiracies, and there's much history besides. I've been doing a lot of research on, please excuse me if I'm getting a little frustrated and confused at my presentation. But anyway, my point is, the people in the areas that I have talked to, I have got Elementary School to the little restaurant on Newport Drive, the Yellow Restaurant, if you're familiar with the area on East Vista Way, which is about a two-mile period, there's three dispensaries. One of them is located directly across the street from my house and it is posed as an ice cream store. The owners there, originally when they came there, I tried to go and approach them with an open mind as a citizen, I realized what we just voted and let me just say this, I stand before you with a little buyer's remorse and I stand here with conflict. Even though I have a background in AOD, I have voted for every amendment and supportive act in order to make medical cannabis available to patients in a responsible manner. But what we're seeing is not a responsible manner, we're seeing a wild cowboy western atmosphere where people are being allowed to run their businesses unsupervised, unregulated and they are being positioned in communities that were targeted in the first place to make medical, to make marijuana a class, act, a class, scheduled class drug in the first place by DuPont, Hearst, William Hearst and some other people and there's other conspiracies and there's much history besides, I've been doing a lot of research on, please excuse me if I'm getting a little frustrated and confused at my presentation. But anyway, my point is, the people in the areas that I have talked to, I have got, I've started circulating a petition, I've got 42 signatures within two days, I've walked within about a two-mile parameter of my home, I'm recovering from a hip surgery so, you know, I gotta get out and get a little exercise so, you know, it's a good time to get out and meet my neighbors anyway. Anyway, I have felt like I've been greeted like I am a guardian angel to the community. They've been looking for somebody to speak up for them and express their concerns because they're scared, they're concerned for a lot of reasons, predominantly we're Hispanic community. I won't get into politics, it's obvious why they obviously come out and voice their opinions for some people, there's a lot of Mexican nationals in our neighborhood, very hardworking people.
Sir, I need you to wrap up if you could.
Okay.
Give us the bottom line and kinda finish it off.
Bottom line is, the community of Vista is looking for support and we know that law enforcement is very busy, but we would like to get rid of these illegal dispensaries, they are acting illegally, the people in the community are feeling that they are being left in communities that are disenfranchised, they're predominantly populated by Hispanic populations and we feel that is duly unfair. If you look at the map, the Shadow Ridge, Malrose area, there is no dispensaries there in that area and I know, I have visually seen other places along North Santa Fe that were in other predominantly areas that were better located neighborhoods that they have been removed and stayed removed from.
I need you to finish it, finish it off.
Thank you. Any help would be appreciated, so if the city could take more action, it'd be appreciated.
We work on that all the time, so thank you, but we keep working on it.
And anything I could do to help too.
Thank you. Thank you sir. Carol Lydicson.
Thank you for giving me some time to speak, first time here. I, I'm here in behalf of all mothers and fathers and families that are also concerned about pot shops that could be formed and started in the community and we feel that I've raised, me and my husband have raised six children here in this community and have been very well-supported in the communities and churches and at home with our kids and have had good success, but we're afraid that with all the pressure that we'll get from the commercialization of pot and that our community will go downhill really quick and I would hate to see that for, not only for the kids and the youth, but for our city, which is starting to really thrive and my daughter just went to Seattle and she said that places really went downhill because of, it just went to pot and it stinks really bad and I would hate to see that happen in our, in our city and, and I'd like to ask that we promote measures that will enforce strong family values and help to keep the kids straight and strengthen them and not weaken them and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you so much. That actually completes our speakers and so I guess the next thing I do is go to, any remarks, Councilmember Aguilera.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment to those that did come to speak on the medical marijuana issue in our city, as you know, you know firsthand, some of you, it's a big issue, I just wanna assure you that the city council has been working diligently to try to eliminate them, state law is not really in our favor, so our city attorney has been working very hard on the ordinances and the little law that he has on his side, so it's just a long process, but well aware of the place right across the street from your home unfortunately, well aware of it, working on trying to close that down because these are all illegal and obviously we don't support that and we do have further discussions on this, we can't really discuss it this evening because it's not an item that was on the agenda, but I do encourage you to show up to further meetings and discuss with your other council members here how you're, how it's affecting your lives and your opinions, so thank you for being here.
Thank you. Councilmember Riggby.
Thank you Madam Mayor, I just wanna say thank you to everyone who was here tonight and a special shout-out to our youth commissioners, our planning commission, our student youth advisory, I know you are all moving on to college or graduating high school and doing other things, so I wish you the very best in your future endeavors and I say thank you for what you've done for the city, it's meant a lot to us and for the community cleanup crowd that we had tonight, we do this every year and it's so great to see this community come back again and again and again and take such pride in our city and so I thank you for that as well. And I did wanna to say to Mr. Carlin, I know in your, your voice message you felt bad for calling me on a Sunday night, but that's why my phone number is out there, you can call me anytime and I've had people call me at 2:00 in the morning and that's okay too, so no worries and if you can stick around, I have something else I wanted to talk to you about, so if you wouldn't mind, so with that, thank you Madam Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I would just join my colleagues in saying thank you to all the volunteers on the commissions and the neighborhood cleanups and, and all of the residents that took the time to be here and take an interest in what's happening in our city, we really appreciate it, thank you for all that all of you do.
Mr. Green.
Thank you Madam Mayor, once again, thank you all for showing up tonight like my fellow council members and mayor said, I wanna give a special shout-out to those deputies in the back, I will not call you officers after hanging out with you for an entire night on a ride-along on Saturday night, you guys work very hard and there's a lot going on in Vista and I am really proud of the deputies that we have on staff here, I feel like you guys, when I was at least out with you at night, we were great in the community, friendly, they received us with welcome arms with, which I think is uncommon sometimes these days and I know you guys get, you know, a lot of bad publicity, but in Vista, you guys are doing a great job, you are there to protect and serve and it was, it was a great night in Vista Saturday night, lots of graduations, lots of parties broken up, but it was great to have you guys out there and keeping us safe, so thank you guys for being here and thanks for all you do for the community.
Okay, how about our city manager?
Thanks Mayor, just two items, one, I just wanted to mention that the city and the chamber are recruiting volunteers for the survey of businesses in the downtown of Paseo-Santa Fe Corridor on May 31st, which is next week and so this is an opportunity to go out and meet business leaders, meet owners of property, meet tenants and to find out how they feel about the city, if they have any needs and it's a really good experience, I know all of you have participated in the past, so encourage anyone that would like to to register online at cityofvista.com to volunteer. And the other is on Tuesday, which is May 30th, we're holding our seventh by district election meeting, which is a public hearing and that will be the final opportunity and the agenda was published today for the public to weigh in on the map process with all of you and then on June 13th, you'll have your, your eighth meeting and final public hearing to actually adopt the map, so just wanted to give everybody a heads-up on that, thank you.
Okay, and I forgot to do my announcements and I have a few of them here, so dining options are increasing in Vista, in the past few weeks, Lucadia Pizzeria opened itself Vista and 508 Tavern opened on South Santa Fe near Guajami Street, so there's more new dining options are coming and so we'll continue to provide updates because there's some, some more that are coming. Members of the city's adopted Marine Corps unit, HMLA 369, will be returning home soon from deployment. In anticipation, we are collecting new bath towels for welcome home packages for battalion single Marines, many of whom return to empty barracks and are in need of personal care items until their belongings are returned to them several days after they arrive, so if you have any, you can drop off a new towel at the Civic Center and receive a free reusable City of Vista shopping bag while the supplies last. John, you have, I was gonna say, hold it up, do you have one? Yeah, the free, the free shopping bags, yeah, they're nice, they're kinda nice. Those are the things that I always leave in the car when I go shopping and I always have to buy shopping bags, I always forget them, I put it in my car. Okay, The Wave Water Park opens for the summer season this Saturday, May 27th and ticket information is online at thewavewaterpark.com and also, we're excited to have the annual Strawberry Festival downtown this Sunday, May 28th, you can stop by and visit the city booth in front of the Abo Playhouse on Main Street and the festival information is online at vistastrawberryfest.com so you can get information on it, but it's always an exciting day with lots of people in town and it will be, there are some street closures, so you might wanna go on there and check on the street closures, they're closed early in the morning though, I think 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning for just like an hour, an hour and a half of the runs. And the last thing, the American Legion Post 365 is holding a Memorial Day Remembrance Ceremony here at the Civic Center on Monday, May 29th at 10:00 a.m., so hopefully I'll see some of the people at that memorial service on Monday, so that is the end of my, thanks, other city attorney have anything?
Thank you Mayor, in light of some earlier comments tonight, I'd like to mention some information that will be coming out, we have closed an additional two medical marijuana dispensaries, one on Civic Center Drive, one on Santa Fe, those were just closed within the last few days, that brings to 36, the number that we have closed in the last three years through basically criminal prosecutions. In connection with this closure, seven individuals and one corporation pled guilty to criminal violations of the penal code for criminal public nuisance and they all paid fines and that included the landlord of the property, so we'll be putting out some information about that to the public, but it seemed appropriate to mention it here tonight, thank you.
Okay, how about our city clerk? Kathy Valdez, nothing tonight, okay. With that, if there's nothing else for the order, I will call us adjourned.